Okay, we can start. Um. One second. I'm having a slight delay on my computer, sorry. Okay, so I'll call this meeting for a special meeting of the Jones LSC. And. Sarah, can you do the roll? And confirm forum?
Yeah, I can do the roll call, let me pull up my menu. Okay, roll call Kim, Ms. Bowman.
Here.
Boyd. Serena Prado. Presswell.
Here.
Oh, that's Ms. That's Serena Prado, okay, thank you. Presswell.
Here.
Hernandez. Hillbrands. Ma here, Martin Sack.
Here.
Arthur. Menjivar.
Present.
Powers.
Here.
Zen. And Ms. Bug said she wouldn't be here, so that's one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. Thank you. Um. I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
One second.
Let me do a roll call Bowman. Serena Prado. I see her. Presswell. Yay. Ma yay, Martin Sack.
Yay.
Menjivar.
Yay.
Zen.
I posed this letter this weekend with some urgency, given the timeline for our return to school. I've shared this letter with my colleagues who have raised many concerns to me. And I'm in the process of getting this approved and signed off on by colleagues. I have almost fifty approvals of the letter and almost forty and growing signatures. I'm going to continue to collect them this week. And I will share that letter with with LSC admin, the safety committee, and so on and so forth when it's completed. Thank you. Dear Jones LSC, Dr. Powers and the Jones admin team. It's been a tremendously challenging year for all of us in the Jones community. The transition to remote learning in the midst of a pandemic has forced us to shift the way we approach our shared mission of holistically educating our students and children while safeguarding their physical and mental health. Some of these changes have been suboptimal, to say the least, but others have been welcome innovations that have better suited our evolving world. As we begin to discuss the transition back into the building, it is increasingly clear that the new normal cannot, and perhaps should not, be exactly the same as the old normal. One of those areas that must change is our use of technology and our students' access to it. The faculty was recently informed of the following. Number one, students will no longer be allowed to bring their personal devices into the building, a practice that was common in the past. And number two, a large number of our school Chromebooks, particularly from the math and English department, were distributed to students and will not be available in the building at this time. Number three, admin has not expressed interest in purchasing enough Chromebooks to become a one-to-one school. Even before the pandemic, access to laptops in school was an increasingly useful instructional tool for skill practice, writing, research, digital editing, AP exam practice, and so much more. As we return to the building with increased safety protocols and at least thirty percent of our students continuing to learn remotely, the ability for students to work from laptops is both an instructional and a public health necessity. It will allow us to teach face-to-face and virtual students simultaneously while limiting circulation of materials and people. It will also provide tech access to many of our lower-income students who do not have reliable access to technology at home. CPS's own guidance urges continuing a one-to-one system. We badly need more laptops. And is it extremely discouraging to hear that we will have even fewer than we did before we left the building last year? We strongly encourage administration, with the support of the LSC, to take the following steps. Number one, purchase enough Chromebooks for every student who needs one to have one during the school day. Two, allow students to bring their own devices into the building. If this is an existing CPS policy, advocate for it to change. And number three, replenish the Chromebooks taken from our currently existing carts as quickly as possible. We recognize that this will come with logistical and financial challenges. However, the district's $1.8 billion in stimulus funds should help cover the cost. In fact, they were expressly designed to address these sorts of needs. The logistical challenges may take some creative thinking, but they're far more solvable than the logistical problems created by not having appropriate computer access in the building. Many other CPS schools, including Peyton, Kennedy, and Sen, have adopted one-to-one programs for years and have figured it out. We can too. Our current technological course is untenable for reasons of pedagogy, safety, and equity. We are scheduled to return to the building in less than a month, so we need to expedite and prioritize this issue. Even if we cannot feasibly increase our Chromebook access in time for this year's return, we must start now on preparing for the fall. In the midst of these difficult times, please work with us to provide our students with a learning experience they deserve. Respectfully, Brady Gunning and Jones faculty to be listed. Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much, Brady, and we definitely are looking forward to getting a written copy of that, and we'll forward it to the full LSC. Okay, are there any brief comments for Brady? And his emails in the chat.
Cassie?
Yes.
Just briefly, I did receive a copy of this a little bit ago and looking through it. Just just one, I agree completely in terms of what our needs are for our kids. And it's just going to be a question, as he says, finances and logistics of making it happen. We are still waiting to find out from CPS just exactly what technology is going to be distributed to these to the high schools. That has not yet been announced. I anticipated that late last week, early this week, and it has not happened yet. I've been reaching out continuously to find out just exactly what we can count on receiving, and that will help us to determine what we will have to address in terms of our own orders. Good point also made here in that it is quite likely that even if we knew today exactly what we needed and had the funds available to place the orders, the odds of us getting everything in time for school to reopen in less than a month are pretty slim. We experienced that same problem last fall when we had to make some some quick orders, and this was across the system.
Okay, thank you, Dr.
Taking this under consideration, and we're going to make sure that we meet our kids' kids' needs as expeditiously as we can.
Great. I think we'll definitely have additional comments on this coming up at future meetings, for sure. In addition to the budget meeting. Okay, so we will cover the rest of the public speakers at the end. And. So our next item will be the number four approving two internal account expenditures. And those you can see from your agenda. If council members have any questions about these. Please put yourself on stack or raise your hand. I wanted to give just a very brief statement because I called this special meeting, and I think these are important votes. So thank you, guys, for making yourselves available at short notice. Given the unusual circumstances of planning for simultaneous in-person and remote learning, I think there's inevitably going to be some need to be very responsive and nimble to these unforeseen requirements of the faculty, staff, and students. And so special meetings and even emergency meetings might still be necessary. We need everyone to be nimble and adaptable as the school prepares for reopening. And I understand that you guys, as council members, may have some questions about these purchases. Please ask them, in particular, how they fit into the larger budget, especially for technology at Jones. However you vote today, I think the process of being presented with and evaluating the approval of these two purchases has really illustrated to me that we need, there's a general need for us to have additional information about the budget, including historical numbers, revenue, and expenditures for context, and also projected needs going forward. In addition, for IT specifically, the LSC, especially if we're going to be considering this one-to-one plan, we really need a technology plan, a school-wide inventory, and a schedule for additions and replacements. Otherwise, we really can't make informed, responsible decisions when we vote. As far as setting the threshold for expenditures requiring approval, that will be on the agenda of the April thirteenth meeting, as requested by the trees that are meeting on March ninth, and we'll debate it in full at that time. As it is the reason both of these requisitions need our approval today, I am going to take just thirty seconds here to set out for the entire school community to understand why the limit is currently set to $2,500. Until the new LSC was seated, spending and transfers were largely unmonitored by the LSC. At our meeting on January nineteenth, the newly elected LSC voted into effect a new set of bylaws by a vote of eleven zero. Those bylaws set the threshold for internal account expenditures that require LSC approval to the default amount for CPS high schools. It's crucial for the LSC and the greater school community to know how money is being spent in the school. And in fact, it is the legal duty of the LSC to approve how money is being allocated, including voting on budget transfers within funds of any amount. This oversight is the way that we can exercise our further duty to ensure that the topmost priorities of the school as set in the school improvement plan are receiving the resources they need. I highly encourage everyone in the school community to take the time to read or reread both CPS's LSC reference guide and the Illinois School Code section on local school councils to gain a clear understanding of how budget oversight is intended to work. All of our collaborative efforts depend on us all having such an understanding. Okay, so thank you for indulging me in that. I think it was important for context for this vote. I'll take any further questions about their approvals, or we can move to a motion and then have a little debate if people need that. We just have a couple minutes before the teachers need to leave, but if we need to reconvene, we can.
I move to approve the two check requisitions.
Do we have a second? Stakes? Any debate? Seeing none, I think we can move to the vote. Sarah, do you want to take the roll?
Sure. Bowman?
Yes.
Serena Prado.
Yes.
Presswell.
Yes.
Hernandez.
Yes.
Ma, yay, Martin Sack. Right, yes. Okay. Menjivar.
Yes.
Powers?
Yes.
Zen?
Yes.
That was eight. Oh, that, I'm sorry, that was nine. Nine of nine.
If there's no further discussion on that item, then we can move back to the remainder of public participation. And thank you, especially to people who need to leave at seven fifty for making time for this in your morning. So let me go back to the speaker sign-up list to see here. Harold?
Good morning. I'm Carol Dealey, a parent of a Jones junior. And I just will abbreviate my comments because it sounds like some of them are going to be addressed at the next LSC meeting. But my when I found out that the threshold established was set at the default level, I a question that I had is, it seems to me that a threshold being set at a default level would be for a school that had financial improprieties in the past or had severe budget constraints, and so I just wonder if it's going from what you say there was no checks and balances to completely overseeing everything, I wonder at this time if that's the right thing to do, even though it sounds like it's too late, you already voted on it, but it seems to me that there could be a happy medium there. Because it, to me, it signals a lack of competence in the administration if you take it all the way to the default level at the beginning of your tenure. Secondly, I was wondering about, I wanted to express that we, about the calendaring issue and the announcements of meetings, that it's hard to find them. So I look at the school webpage and I see like Friends of Jones is on there and other things, and it's hard to find the LSC meetings, and you have to go under like the parent section, whatever. I'm just saying, I think a lot of people would not be able to find the meeting. And people have, and this morning even with that YouTube link not working, and then the YouTube link was what was on social media, and now a lot, and a lot of people aren't on social media, right? If we want to talk about equity, people aren't on social media. Anyway, that was the YouTube was on social media, and then on the school website, the just the Zoom link. So I don't know, I just think it, we should just try to make it as easy as possible for everybody to find the meetings. That's it. Thank you.
Thanks, Carol. Yeah, I think it would be great to maybe just put local school council under the main tab on the page, but also I would really like to see the meeting announcements easier to find on the website and, you know, Troy was out this week, and so he's kind of, he was only on the website and the email, so it was a logistical difficulty for this special meeting. And so not everything is quite as lockstep as we've been managing. Okay, anyone else have comments for Carol? If not.
Chair, Ms. Ruben, yeah, so if I can make a quick comment. Ms. Dealey, thank you so much for participating, and I agree that we shouldn't streamline this, make it easier for for more families to participate, for more families to come and and engage the LSC, raise issues that that may impact them and other families, and raise other other items that would support the the entire school community, like Mr. Mr. Brady Gunning, how he raised certain issues about making the school one-to-one and moving ahead and looking forward. So I think that would be a great idea, and I think Ms. Creswell and Ms. Ma have been working diligently with with Mr. Hillbrands and Dr. Powers to try to make this more visible, accessible to the public. So thank you so much.
Great. Thanks, Rebecca. Thanks, Carol. Carol, definitely stay in touch on this, on both of these issues. And next is Patty.
Good morning, everyone. I'm trying to start my video. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I'm trying to start the video, but it's not having any, it's not working with me this morning. But good morning, Dr. Powers and members of the local school council. I just wanted to address the email that was sent out earlier this month about senior graduation celebrations. Our students, I'm a, just to give you a little bit of an update, I am a parent of a senior at Jones. I came to the school late as my daughter was a transfer junior year, and I just wanted to say that the students at Jones typify their, the Eagle requirements for graduation. We came to the school from a private school and found the Jones students to be kind and thoughtful and studious and hardworking, and I was so impressed by the student body. And when I saw that some of the senior celebrations, most specifically graduation and prom and the panoramic picture day and cupcake cupcake day were being postponed or potentially canceled, a group of parents got together and decided that they wanted to do whatever they could to help make these these celebrations happen. We have a little ad hoc committee that's comprised of several parents, Mont Calaski, Amy Finale, myself, Jackie, Darren Thompson, and three students, Trinity Lee of the Student Government Association, Donya Boyd, who's a student LSC rep and president of the Black Student Union, and Ava Thompson, who's the editor-in-chief of the Jones Blueprint. And our group has also spoken with Dr. Plunkett over the weekend or Friday to help us navigate the CPS parameters. And basically, what I wanted to address to you this morning was that things are different from last year where we were. Last year, we were at the beginning of this pandemic, and now the kids are going to be back to school on April nineteenth. The pandemic numbers have continued to go down unlike last year, and so many more Chicagoans will be vaccinated, up to a million Chicagoans have received their first dose, and the teachers are being vaccinated. So we're not in the same place. All of the parents, I'm sure, and the students want to operate under the guidelines of what's going to be safe. Safe for our students. We don't want to need one, you know, we don't want to create any super-spreader events or anything like that, but we believe that with some creativity and the support of the local school council, Friends of Jones, and the Jones administration, we can make these these very important and pivotal experiences for our children happen. Like I said before, the Jones students are not just guy, you know, are not just coasting through high school, just putting their time in. These are students that are working hard, studying hard, they worked hard to get into Jones, they're working hard to get into the colleges if they're a choice, and they deserve a graduation and an end-of-year celebration that celebrates the effort they put in, in addition to in some way making up for the tremendous year that they've lost. I I know that every high school student yearns for their senior year, and it's the best time of high school, and they've missed almost all of it. We have done a lot of research about options for graduation, utilizing maybe both auditoriums, holding a staggered staggered graduation as opposed to just the drive-through that would happen last year. I'm going to submit the our Google Doc that has some of those ideas. And for prom, we've all thought about things that we can happen outside, like a barefoot prom on a beach or a masquerade prom. These could be a Jones event if we can meet those parameters, or even several parents are committed to making it a more informal, unofficial event happen. Some of the other things like Cupcake Day and Panoramic Photo at Buckingham found are, I think, starting to move in the right direction. But the reason, real reason that we want to talk to you today is we just wanted your support in helping us to make these things happen, whether it's your support with the Friends of Jones or with the administration. Our children deserve a celebration. They deserve some closure on their high school year. They deserve to have as much as close to a normal experience for, to round out their senior year in what has been an incredibly unusual year. So I thank you for your attention, your time. I will submit our ideas and we'll hope to follow up with you soon and let you know about our progress.
Thanks, Patty. We got a PowerPoint from Ava Thompson. Should I share that with everyone now? I was planning to forward it to them anyway. I have a link in the chat also.
Great. I think that students have worked, our committee have worked really hard on looking at options. There are lots of low-cost options for prom or even options for graduations. One of our members of our committee have talked to some powers to be at at the City of Chicago, were told to get creative on this issue. And so that's, we took those then guidance and pushed forward. I think we can make it happen for them.
Okay. I think you have some background noise, but thank you so much, and please, you know, stay in touch. I'll put my email in the chat as well. And I think everyone is very eager to make this a collaborative and, you know, good celebration. And I think, Dr. Powers, did you have a comment?
Yes, I wanted to thank Mrs. Blagojevich for for chiming in this morning, and we've had some conversations back and forth via email. And we had earlier received Ava Thompson's PowerPoint and recommendations. Right now, my big, my first focus is on graduation, and we are looking at a onsite graduation that is a staggered schedule using both our auditoriums. That falls under some of the guidelines that CPS has provided us with, and we can work with that. If the guidelines increase, in other words, the indoor numbers increase past fifty, we can actually scale that up as well. So I'm going to be meeting with the senior class leadership. I sent out a request to meet on Wednesday afternoon to go over these possible plans and see that what the student reaction might be from the leadership of the class. With regard to prom, again, I appreciate all the creative ideas that are coming out, and I think it's great. We're still limited in terms of actual size of people, and just as a reminder, that's total people involved. In other words, it isn't just the guests of the students, it's the guests, not just the students, but it's also guests, it's if it's food, waitstaff, security, chaperones, you name it, that all goes into that number. So we're monitoring that and also looking at some of these different ideas for a prom-type experience. But the graduation part is the one that I've been focusing on at this particular time. Also, some of the other areas with regard to the panoramic picture, for example, we've got some creative plans in the works on that. Also, the cupcake day, the student decision day, May first, the counseling department has developed a plan for that that is virtual, but if we are back in school starting the fourth quarter, we're going to work in an in-person aspect to that as well. So we, a lot of these things are in the mix at the moment, but thank you very much for everybody's input on that. It's it's exciting. We're going to make it work, and we're going to have some good things going on for our seniors.
Great. I think that is going to be the end of our public participation list. There's one more person listed, but I do not see them in the waiting room or in the list, so I think that is it. We don't have any further business. Dr. Plunkett, I think you raised your hand, but you also put a comment in the chat, so if you do have a quick item, you can add it now.
Yeah, I just wanted to, it's basically what I said in the chat, and as Mrs. Blagojevich said, I did meet with several senior parents and students this weekend, and I just want it to be very clear that the the school leadership, Dr. Powers, Mr. Mitchell, Ms. Gonzalez, myself, we want nothing more than to celebrate our seniors. These seniors deserve nothing less than a great celebration for what they've been through, but we have to follow our CPS guidelines, and we are trying to think creatively and, you know, manage the return to school. But I I think sometimes people put a different spin on things, and it sounds like we don't want to do this stuff. We do want to do this stuff. Having myself twenty-seven years in high school, Dr. Powers over forty years, this is, this is what we do. We do this for the kids, and we want to do something for the kids, along with technology and everything. I think it's important to note that in my tenure, I have never known a teacher or a student to not have any tech or any book or something they need. We make it work. So I just want to make sure that that is out there, because I think sometimes things get spun out differently based on what's in the media and what's on Twitter, and I know, I, the kids at Jones, we make sure that if if they need the technology, that they get the technology that they need, and yeah, we've got logistics and we've got finances to figure out. But our whole mission is to do what's in the best interest of these students, and we are going to continue to do that. And so I think sometimes things get miscommunicated or spun out of control, that the school leadership doesn't want this and doesn't want that, and I just want it to be clear that we do. We want all of this for our students. That's why we do the job we do. We don't have school leadership works for the students, and that, I mean, that's how we do what we do, because we love these kids, and that's all I have to say.
Thanks, Dr. Plunkett. Okay, I, you know, completely agree with that. We really all need to make a commitment, and, you know, it takes a lot of work to plan all of this stuff, both graduation, tech. I think Mr. Gunning really spoke to that this morning about how we really need to make sure that every kid has what they need to succeed. And I am looking forward to working with the teachers and the admin team to make sure that we can carry that out. Any last comments? If not, I will, I think, since we're done with our business, looking for the comments, anyone? Okay, I think we can make it quick.
No, I just wanted to ask, Dr. Powers, I know you mentioned that you got some new information from CPS guidance on graduation. You said a staggered approach, so it'd be like one day where you bring in a hundred students for the first couple hours, and then somehow another couple hours. and then somehow another couple hours, another hundred students. So I just need a clarification on that. And then the second thing I wanted to ask is if if your team has or would be willing to explore what Ms. Blagojevich has asked, maybe other facilities to host like a larger graduation, maybe renting out the Soldier Field parking lot and having a tent. So that way, it would be social distancing, it would be up in the air. I don't know if that's something, I'm just trying to brainstorm and try to get something for these seniors. So, yeah.
Just real quickly, thanks very much for your question on that. It doesn't matter at this, at this particular point, it doesn't matter the size of the venue. The maximum outdoors is one hundred. That is the CPS guidelines we've been given. And once that changes, obviously, we can, you know, make additional plans for that. With regard to what we're looking at right now for an in-person graduation at the school, we would probably do it all within one day and use both auditoriums and have probably be limited to two guests per graduate, which is unfortunate, but it, those kind of things do happen sometimes. We would try to set up live streaming if at all possible. It's going to, it's going to take some logistical challenges to overcome, especially the actual scheduling of it. But we would use basically the same type of timeframe we used for the drive-through. But instead, and we already have the use of the parking lot across the street, we've already contracted for that for June thirteenth, which is a Sunday. And that way, we can begin hopefully around noon and continue on until probably four o'clock or thereabouts, having people coming in in groups of fifty, twenty-five in each auditorium with their guests seated. And then we go on break, go on to the next group and so forth. I think we can do it. I think we can do it effectively. And fortunately, like I said, we've got the use of a large parking lot, which otherwise this would be very challenging.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah, I think everyone will be, I think, continue to work on creative solutions. And, you know, if there's contingency plans that can be made with the idea that health and safety requirements may be different in June, I think that's, you know, I would love to see that for everyone. Okay, I think the discussions on all of this will continue, I'm sure. But otherwise, I will adjourn the meeting. Thank you, guys. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Take care. Be safe.
Thank you.